One nation, under God, indivisible, the liberty of justice for all.
Roll call of the board.
Trustee Ertler?
Here.
Trustee Clark?
Here.
Trustee Gaisman?
Here.
Trustee Kibitsky? Supervisor Teshar?
Here.
Let the record know clerk was in attendance.
Do I hear a motion to approve the minutes of on November 17, 2015, board meeting? Do I hear a second?
I second.
Any questions, concerns?
I have a couple things. On page two, in that first paragraph, full paragraph trustees reports. On to the third line down, I think that word "B" is superfluous there. So educational credit to be affixed to, so that the word "B" should come out. To be affixed to the plaque.
Credit to affixed.
And which one's on here?
The third line.
Be or affixed?
The third line down.
Affixed to.
It's right on the right, to be affixed to. The "B" should come out, the word "B."
Credit to affixed, to be the plaque in the office?
No, 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 it should just say.
To the plaque.
To be affixed to.
Take a "B." To the plaque, okay.
Right, so the "B" should come out.
Oh, I see it, the second "B," I cut it wrong.
Oh, sorry, yeah, the right part of "B" is there.
Yeah, when you're saying affixed, I'm looking at the looking for.
Okay, okay, all right. So the second one. And then on the next line, there are 1,431 townships in the state. Consider them more than the 231.
Fourteen.
1,431.
Okay.
And then if you could, just, I don't know what happened here, but on page four, under J. One, two, three, four. Yeah, then that paragraph, and then also in O, the last line on the page of O.
I see it.
Somehow there got to be spaces.
I read this before, and I thought I fixed them all.
Any other questions or concerns?
No.
I make a motion to approve as amended. Do I hear a second?
I second.
All in favor?
All right.
Any opposed?
I have to stay out of here.
Okay. Communications.
One second, Rich, I'll be right back.
Yeah, no problem. Don't go too quick, let me.
You're fast, you're a fast man today. We received a letter from Joseph Topinka, saying that he's the executor of his mother's estate. And that was requested, I believe, by you.
The attorney.
By the attorney.
So save that.
So we have that in our possession.
Okay. Give that to Andrew Wormarch, and tell him to put it in the file for, yeah, because it was a plaque file.
Okay.
Okay, is any questions come up in the future, from senior?
Okay, we have that in our possession, I'll give it to them.
Yeah.
We also received a letter from Feds Plus thanking us for our generous contribution of $1,500. They thank us for our continued support, and they wish us all happy holidays. And Aging Care Connections thanked us for our generous contribution of a grant of $3,000. And they also thanked us for our continued support of their services. And that's it.
Okay. Visitor's tree smarts. No, can't. Okay. I have no report, trustees reports.
Nothing.
I would just like to say the senior luncheon is tomorrow, at the Riverside Golf Club at 12 o'clock, you're all invited.
What time is Thursday?
It's tomorrow, Wednesday.
Okay.
So I know Wayne is coming, Anna and Steve are coming.
In what time?
12 o'clock.
Okay.
John, would you like to come?
Wayne and who's going? I cannot tomorrow, I cannot tomorrow.
Wayne and who else are going?
Wayne, Ann, Fran, myself.
Where is it? I'm gonna try.
At the golf club, the Riverside Golf Club, displays twice, you know.
I know, I've been there many times.
Okay. We have really good entertainment tomorrow, I have some holiday carolers coming.
Okay, anything else? Okay, mental health court report. No.
Well, you have some materials in the, in your blinders. As I mentioned to you, we have Paul Landall because he has moved to LaGrange.
Okay.
So.
Those way, and Erica Paul Landall is still leaving the border, adds luck.
Right.
He's moving out of the area.
I think he was gonna send you a letter or something.
I haven't got that.
Did he get anything?
No.
I believe he's already moved.
Old business. Okay. The auditory and plaque for Judy Bart Topinka, there is a very long letter and a very long request that we at least review it, I guess, for Joseph Topinka Jr. Does anybody have any ideas about this?
Well, I would say that this is way too long, and that we need to make it more of a bulletin type thing.
I can't hear you.
I feel this is, this is too much information, and it's too long, and that we need to just really highlight her career as a public service.
I agree with you.
And just, you know, and then with, you know, a sentence, "With deep appreciation and gratitude, we remember Judy Bart Topinka for her generous service to the residents of Riverside Township in Illinois."
I agree. Everybody agree?
Yep.
Yes, and then I think, you know, I'd also would like to see a little, what do they call it, a bust of her, on it, if possible.
Right. Um.
The last plaque that we have by the elevator is a nice size.
Yeah.
And it's a nice looking plaque. So if we could do something like that, and have her picture on the side.
On the left side.
Whatever they call it.
Okay, now, okay.
I think they call it a bust, I'm not too sure.
Okay, now that plaque size out there is 14 inches by 24, which is what you've got a a cast bronze with sculptured face.
I think we can get the information that Mary Robb pointed out, a plaque that size.
Well, we already have a quote on a plaque that size.
Yeah, with the bust.
It's right in your packet, Jack.
Yeah, it's on this next.
Oh, that other page, hey, I got it, I got it.
Okay. So we have that as almost $4,000, $39.56.
Does that, what about the wording, does that matter, I mean, as far as the cost, or is that the cost just for the sculptured face?
That I would have to double check. Uh, we can't, so.
Okay, the, my thinking is almost 4,000. That's, that's a lot of money, especially since last month, we, we were concerned about, you know, what money would be coming in, we didn't give out a couple of grants to youth organizations. Do we really want to go for a plaque at this, since we didn't give to youths in the township? Anybody's, I'm bringing this up as devil's advocate.
We've been working on this for months.
I, it doesn't matter how long we've been working on it, you know, it comes down to, we couldn't give, we couldn't give the money last month, why, you know, which was, you know, $1,000 more than what the most expensive one was, why, you know, to youths, I mean, you know.
But didn't we vote at a board meeting to go this route with this?
Not at the price.
No.
We voted.
Oh, yeah, a plaque, yes.
Yeah, a plaque, but we didn't, we never agreed on a budget.
Price or a size.
Or how much was gonna put up either.
So.
Well, Pepe said he would be willing to pitch in.
Right, exactly.
Okay.
We'll discuss how much he would do, or what the flag would toss, and how much of it he would throw.
But I think he is willing to pitch in if we put all this.
Yeah, if, yes, if we do it his way.
Yes.
Right. I mean, you know, we couldn't do it, even if it was this way, okay?
You'd have to put it out.
You know, I mean, you know, in my mind, you know, it gives her whole life story. If you want something like, you know, something like that, in my mind, should be put in the book he's writing about his mother, you know what I mean?
Right, exactly.
Or, you know, have, have something printed up nicely, you know, by him, that he could give the college she graduated, or the high schools she graduated from, or local library, or several libraries, you know, that, you know, but.
It's a little bit too much for a plaque.
Yes, it's way, no, Ann, it's way too much for a plaque. Nobody's gonna read it.
You have to print, the print would be so small, nobody would read it.
Right, well, I mean, you know, there are plaques that are this way, that are smaller out there, people don't read.
How about they put it on a scroll?
Have somebody come out with one of those, you know, trumpets, you know.
Why don't I contact Ken Cooper again?
Okay.
And tell him exactly what we want, and let him give us the plaque size.
Okay.
And let him give us a quote for that.
Okay, now, I would think we'd want the dark background like that.
Okay.
With the bronze shown through, because it, so you could read it.
That's pretty standard, yeah.
Because out there, there is one from one of the townships, I don't know.
Oh, that was way back, right?
Well, I don't think so, it wasn't that way, it was long ago, but I think, you know.
Well, they put a cheap plaque.
But it was on a gold plaque, and you can't even read the names on it.
I don't know the one you're talking about. Yeah, I don't know the one you're talking about.
You know, so, you know, something like that, where you, dark background and the bronze shows out so people could read it.
That's very nice.
You know what, you know what you might do, I don't know if you can do it, take a picture of that plaque.
Yeah, I'll take a picture and.
Send it to him.
I'll send it to him, yeah.
You know.
Because the plaque out there is the same color, so, yeah, I'll take a picture.
And then, you know, next month, you can come back with the price on it.
With the price on it.
But.
Hold on.
Well, this wording that I guess you did, Mary Robb here, begin with, with after the dates, "With deep appreciation and gratitude, we remember Judy Bart for her generous service to the residents of Riverside Township in Illinois," I mean, that's, that's nice. Did you do that?
Yeah, Mary did that.
Yeah, that's well written.
Yeah.
Something like the swimming, you know, double check these dates.
I am double check, yeah, I will double check the dates before, you know, this goes.
Yeah, because I see a 10-year span, and I think treasurer's four years.
Yeah, that's what.
So is the senate. The house is two, I think.
House is two, yes, senate is.
Four, I think, or six.
I thought it was six.
At the Illinois senate? I don't know, it could be, I don't know. I know you're not, I think they said it is six.
Well, we can say.
Is it six for Illinois?
I think so.
Well, let's see, what did he say in her survey?
Well, she said she was state treasurer for a third term, so state treasurer should be 95 to 2007, then, right?
All right, and then she was out of office for four years.
And then reelected in.
Elected state comptroller in.
2010.
2010.
But, you know, in his letter.
You have to get the sworn-in date, because it's in January, isn't it, so that would be 2011, though.
Yeah, that's the thing, you know, the real dates.
Right.
Yeah, that's what.
Double check them.
Oh, yeah, they will be double checked, triple checked, and quadruple checked. Don't worry.
I'll tell you the truth, I, yeah, we double checked, like, this has got some information you might, you might pick up yet.
Okay, okay, that's one.
I can put in your box.
Okay, that sounds great, that's one.
So. Okay. Do I hear a motion, so we can basically close this out for a size, 24 inches by 14 inches?
Well, I don't think.
Or you, you want to wait till next month?
I think we want to wait till next month, and see what they come back with.
Okay.
That's what, so I think basically.
Do we want to put a price on this, though, at least tonight, maximum?
You don't know until you get.
Yeah, I think we just, we have to.
So you get an estimate.
Table this again until this month.
I mean, table this.
I know, I do too.
All right.
But.
Well, then, once we know the price, we can get back to him and say.
It'll go faster, yeah.
You know.
Yeah, that's what.
Or you go with it.
Yep, I agree.
Is somebody gonna have communication with Joseph about this?
Well, I'm sure, I'm not gonna say anything, because nothing's been decided yet.
Right.
Okay, well, maybe somebody should tell him that.
Well, I'm sure he's gonna email me tomorrow.
Sure he will.
Okay.
Okay. Okay, adopt the annual township levy and truth in taxation. Now, you'll see there is a orange folder, okay?
Yes.
That is the most current. We have, Ann has been in contact with DeMonte, and made sure everything was copacetic.
Okay.
So, any questions or concerns about the annual tax levy for 2015? Any questions, concerns? Do I hear a motion to accept?
Some will.
Well, second.
Any questions, concerns? Hearing none, roll call.
Trustee Clark?
Yes.
Trustee Ertler?
Yes.
Trustee Gaisman?
Yes.
Trustee Kibitsky?
Yes.
Supervisor Teshar?
Yes.
Motion carried.
You know, it's just a comment, what would have been helpful with this in the beginning is to have those agency tax reports from Cook County, which I didn't see until yesterday.
I had given your mental health, I'd given Judy.
Judy had the mental health, because she, you know, drafted that, but.
And I could have sworn I had given everybody one once ago, I don't know, but.
No, I didn't.
You know, if I gave Judy, everybody got one, and I know I gave Judy two of them, and she had gotten one, so.
For mental health.
Yeah, well, no, she got everything, yeah, you know, or Les got it, because it was put in the mental health board box.
I don't know why they would care about it.
I have no idea, well, no idea, I, like I said, I just, if it's something for mental health, I put it in their box, and somebody comes by, a little birdie comes by, and picks them all.
Yeah, yeah, no, mental health, but the other two funds that we're levying.
Well, yeah, and I remember putting them in everybody's box, yeah.
You sure that was this year?
I'm sure.
Ann, what are you talking about, which organizations?
Well, we have the General Town Fund, and the General Assistance Fund, and the Mental Health Fund that we levy for. The Mental Health Board always prepares their request and gives it to the township, okay, to be included if it's appropriate, according to the township, in, within the levy. But in order to count, you, you need to know what the extension was that was actually provided to the township for these funds in the prior year, in order to calculate what you want to request this year. And we have decided at last month's meeting that we would take the C, the small, but CPI. So to calculate the CPI, you had to have the extension for 2014 to be able to do that. And, you know, we're trying to review the levy, without that information, you don't know what, whether, what they did was right or not.
Okay.
So, those, those forms from Cook County are necessary.
Everybody got it, yeah, everybody did.
Okay.
Okay, let's go on. Do I hear a motion to accept the truth in taxation? That came with it, is that with it, or did it separate?
Does that separate from that?
It's just a statement that you complied, I mean, you don't have to go to truth in taxation, or you're requesting more than 5%.
So we're trying to approve.
Well, you need, Rich needs to file it with the, with the levy.
Right, but I mean, it doesn't need board approval, though.
No, I've got it right.
Okay.
And I think it's really a part of, what did they say to? Well, they say these documents, I mean, I've always thought they were part and parcel of the same thing, but go ahead, I mean, it can't hurt to just adopt.
Well, yeah, do I hear a motion to adopt?
The certification of compliance for truth in taxation.
I make a motion to adopt the tax levy for 2015, or truth in taxation.
Do I hear a second?
Second.
Any questions, concerns? Hearing none, roll call.
Trustee Clark?
Yes.
Trustee Ertler?
Yes.
Trustee Gaisman?
Yes.
Trustee Kibitsky?
Yes.
Supervisor Teshar?
Yes.
Motion carried.
There's a, Andy, questions? About a while back, a couple months back.
Last one.
You know, and here's the verification that they, they credited us, DeMonte credited us 215 dollars.
Yeah, I didn't quite understand the way they worded this, though, because it says, "We will rebuild when complete," but the treasurer's report was complete. So, I don't know, maybe she's connecting this to the levy, but that can't be. So we'll see how it plays out, but, yeah, that was the treasurer's report.
Okay, yeah, going in, golden ages. Last month, the board wanted to know more of what they were gonna use the money for, and break down, and there's an attached, the Scholarship for Youth Fund, Riverside American Cancer, Toys for Tots, 215 Christmas party, Thanksgiving luncheon, Big Bill prizes, someone, someone, 216 Relay. You know, now, Annabelle did mention that the seniors do chip in, but, you know, somewhat, it doesn't come all out here, everybody knows, it may cost them five, 15, 20 dollars, whatever, you know.
They have 60 members, that's pretty, pretty many people. They didn't pay for anything.
So. Do I hear a motion to give a $5,000 check as a grant to the Riverside seniors, and give it to them? And send it out to them.
I some.
Second.
Any questions or concerns? Hearing none, roll call.
Trustee Clark?
Yes.
Trustee.
Yes.
Trustee Gaisman?
Yes.
Trustee Kibitsky?
Yes.
Supervisor Teshar?
Yes.
Motion carried.
New business. Mental health court appointments. In your packet, you will see, Mr. Dunn Levy has requested to be put in the, appointed on the mental health court, and his resume is in here. Do you, would you like to introduce yourself to the board again?
Certainly, Rich, I'm a timely, background rehabilitation counselor, I have a private practice at Cook Park, and I'm board certified, and also licensed Illinois, and through all my career, which is over 30 years, mental health has been key to the work, and with working with individuals that have executive issues and stuff, in various ways, and so, the opportunity to come up to apply to the board, and that's why I'm here, to answer your question.
Ramble. Right.
Thank you.
Thank you, yes.
Do I hear, do I hear a resolution? What resolution, would that be 2015, what?
Great.
Great.
Second Wayne's resolution.
To appoint.
Wayne made.
Wayne did.
I can't remember, too many people are talking, what happened?
Wayne made the resolution, I seconded it, and somebody asked what happened.
Any other questions or concerns? Hearing none, roll call.
Trustee Clark?
Yes.
Trustee Ertler?
Yes.
Trustee Gaisman?
Yes.
Trustee Kibitsky?
Yes.
Supervisor Teshar?
Yes.
Motion carried, and congratulations.
Congratulations, thank you.
Thank you for volunteering.
Thank you so much.
Looking forward to working with you.
They add this resume together, tell them.
Thank you, you all.
Same here.
Yes.
Same here.
Drive safely. Um, next. On the new business, reappointment of Ann Kibitsky and Judy Novak, I do have a question. Now, Ann's been on there how many years, eight, nine years? Does anybody else want to take Ann's spot, since she's been on there so long? Would anybody else be interested?
I think Ann's been a wonderful time.
Right. Okay, now, I gotta ask, you know.
I'm fine with that.
Yeah, um, do I hear a motion to, for resolution, 2015, four? So move. Reappoint Ann Kibitsky.
Second.
Questions, concerns, hearing none, roll call. Did I include Judy at the same time? You know, there's gonna be resolutions on separate lines.
Probably have to do them separately, yeah.
Trustee Clark?
Yes.
From Ann Kibitsky?
Yes.
Trustee Ertler?
Yes.
Trustee Gaisman?
Yes.
Trustee Kibitsky?
Yes.
Supervisor Teshar?
Yes.
Motion carried.
This can go on the desk, you sign it. Do I hear a motion to appoint under resolution 2015-5 Judy Novak to the mental health court?
Some will.
Some will, right.
Second.
Okay. Questions or concerns? Hearing none, roll call.
Trustee Clark?
Yes.
Trustee Ertler?
Yes.
Trustee Gaisman?
Yes.
Trustee Kibitsky?
Yes.
Supervisor Teshar?
Yes.
Motion carried.
Relay for Life, the American Cancer Society wants to know whether or not. Uh, Relay for Life, the American Cancer Society wants to know whether or not we'd like, moving myself here, um, to buy a sponsorship, their commitment level of five thousand, one thousand, twenty-five hundred, five hundred, fifteen hundred, or two fifty.
I didn't look it up, what did we do before? Oh, here's American Cancer.
We need to support North Riverside in this, and then Brookfield, and neither one of them.
Well, no, we we don't do Brookfield anymore.
No, no, they they combined it into this now.
Yeah, that's what I had heard, yeah.
They don't do it, um, they combined a bunch of them together.
They were combined, right.
Well, this isn't on our list, so I don't, this is the first year they come to us as a combined entity.
I would say we should do two fifty.
Uh, the last time we, well, that was a Betty Scheck, that was, uh, oh nine.
It was different.
Excuse me. It's a two, uh, two hundred and fifty bucks, or twenty.
Yeah, two hundred and fifty dollars.
Do you all want to pay?
Okay.
Where's that on here?
Well, that gives us, um.
They used to, they used to do fifteen hundred, I think.
Yeah, fifteen hundred stands out my mind.
It is, it's, it's on here, fifteen hundred.
Fifteen hundred isn't on here.
But that was the North Riverside with Betty Scheck.
Yeah.
So.
But they combined it, that's just it.
Well, can we, we could do fifteen hundred, can't we?
I think fifteen hundred.
Or a thousand. Fifteen hundred. What's the board's pleasure?
A thousand.
You making the motion?
Yeah, I make a motion, donate a thousand bucks.
Second the motion.
Any questions, concerns? Hearing none, roll call.
Yes.
Trustee Ertler?
Yes.
Trustee Giesman?
Yes.
Trustee Kabinsky?
Yes.
Supervisor Tesher?
Yes.
Motion carried.
Okay, now, the next one, Riverside Junior Food Pantry, listed as a fundraiser beneficiary, um, member of the chat. They had, um, at the, um, the walk, to play it safe, have next month, Marge will tell you how much we got in, but we just got in a check, so, four hundred, sticks out my mind, okay?
Wow.
Good, that was very nice of them to.
Yes, it is, extremely nice.
Yeah, a lot of kids got involved in it.
Well, good, that's what.
And that'll be under FYI next month, okay?
Do I have to do anything with this?
No.
Oh, no, they're just donating the money.
That is great.
It was made out to the food pantry.
Wonderful.
Um, okay, FYI, letter from attorney about open meetings act, we have in the, there FYI, which we took, you know, you can't ask anybody's, um, address.
Did we ever get anything from him about our grant form? Or any comments from the meeting that he attended last?
No, it's comments, you know, the only thing is that, you know, as long as we stick to township organizations, and, you know, what they do for the township, I mean, I can email him.
Because I thought he was gonna give us something in writing to, you know, give us some comments on our either parliamentary procedure that we were following, and the form of the grant request. That was what I thought, but.
I thought he said we were doing fine, except we have to make sure that, you know, they're dedicated to township, you know, that we can justify.
His comments would be interesting, though.
Yeah, I would love to hear what he has to say.
I will email him then, I've got that in my notes.
Um, this letter that he did send, though, that means we need to revise both our rules and the, like, the procedure that we have, because the, those both say.
Do I hear a motion to revise, are they, um, a rule about not asking people their, uh, address when they sign in at meetings?
Well, I don't think you need a, I mean, I think you just need.
I thought that's what you just asked for.
No, no, I'm saying, we need to, first of all, if you're gonna vote on something, it really should be on the agenda.
Right.
And it's not, per se, but if it's just to revise the documentation, I don't think you need to.
Or revise it.
I have a question, though, when we have our annual meeting, the requirement for the people that are coming to that meeting, to attend that meeting, is that they have to be a registered voter within the township?
And they have to sign in as that?
Now, does that exclude that?
Well, I think what he was saying is, you can't ask someone to come to the podium and tell them that they have to give you their name and address. You have to, they have, you can ask their name, but you can't ask them their address.
Doesn't, the village does that, though, don't they? They ask for the name and the address.
See, that's where I thought we got this from, babe, years ago.
They do.
They do ask for the address.
They do, the village does ask their, your addresses.
Well, it's illegal.
Well, no, I'm just, we're just saying that's where we got it from, Wayne, I mean, you know.
Statement.
Just saying that's where we got it from.
No, I know, I'm saying if it's illegal.
The third one, what Wayne's saying is that's illegal, the third one.
Why, yes.
Yeah, the rule has changed, so, and this says, not authorized to require someone to state their address before speaking.
Right, and so it's optional, then, whether they put it down.
Yeah, if they come to the meeting and you have name and address, and they sign in and they put their address, okay.
That's okay.
But if you have them come up here to talk, and you say, state your name and address, you can't do that.
Right, but we can't have their address on the sign sheet either.
Well, it's voluntarily.
But if they voluntarily put their address, we shouldn't have to have, uh, we understand that we should not have to have a separate line that says address, because people are gonna.
Well, I think you have to know where they're from, you can have anybody come in from Timbuktu and start talking up there.
Well, that's what they say, that's what.
You have to have an address to make sure they're from the township.
Well, no.
At the annual meeting, yes.
Not according to this.
At open meetings, anybody can show up.
Oh, that's at open meetings.
And these are open meetings.
Well, but for this, uh.
That's wrong, I think.
The, the annual meeting.
Right.
It's okay for us to learn their address, because those are the only people that are eligible to vote.
Can vote.
Correct.
Right.
All right.
But I will email him and ask that question, too.
But if, if you eliminate the address from the people in attendance here, anybody can walk in here.
Right, well, that adds, they're right under this rule, that anybody can address a public body.
We can have it on our form, but we don't have to demand it.
Exactly.
Oh, 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 okay. As long as it's on the form, then.
See, I don't think we should even have it on the form, and that's what, my understanding what he was saying, it shouldn't even be on the form at one of our town.
If it's, if it's legal to have it on the form, I would leave it on there, it's still a backup.
And if they want to put it on, fine, if they don't, that's fine.
There you go.
See, the, the way I, I would just say, you know, we can't.
I would find out for sure, right?
Sure, ask him.
Yeah, I agree with Wayne on that, I, I think it should be there.
Our monthly meeting.
Well, it says here, under this, uh, in this letter, um, it says, the act provides it, any person shall be permitted an opportunity to address public officials under the rules established and recorded by the public body. Some public bodies have had a longstanding custom and practice where they request that an individual state their home address when they address a public body.
Okay, yeah, but in the next paragraph, I'm sorry.
So they're not, they're not required to, they're, it's okay to write it down if they like, but they're not required to state it.
It says in the next paragraph.
Yeah, that's what, so that's really what this is about.
I would still have that address line in there.
A person may voluntarily provide his or her address when they address a public body, so.
Right, okay, there you go. Then, when you change the sheet, put vol, you know, if you, what can you say, if you feel like.
We just leave it as is.
Leave it as it is, right, you don't have to say it's required.
I thought you changed it, I didn't see the.
If, if they have a problem putting their address down, like I say, do I have to do this or not?
Our sign sheet, it says a name and address, that's all that it says.
But, you know, when I was holding those meetings about naming their town hall after Judy, and people would sign in, someone put their address and some wouldn't, you know, so.
See, now, what, I, the way I understood it last month from him saying, we can't, we can't have them sign in and put their address.
No, it's just right here.
But with it on there, it gives the impression, is what I'm saying, that they have to.
It's, it gives them the impression, but it doesn't say it's a requirement.
Right, or maybe you should put in that required.
I would leave it alone.
No, leave it alone.
Why, I mean, you know, because, you know, he's saying, we're not saying anything, no.
He said that when people address a meeting, they don't have to state their address.
It's not required.
That's what he, what, that's what he said, that was my interpretation of it.
And that's what it says in this letter, too.
Okay, all right, okay, leave it alone then.
We need, we need a clarification.
If it ain't broke, don't fix it.
No, I don't, I'm not gonna email him.
But what needs to be fixed is the rules that we have, and which I assume that you put out there, which state, you know, you have five minutes, you know, you'll be.
So change that.
The rules and the resolution, there's a, we did a resolution in 2011, so that, just the, and address thing has to come out.
So, next, do we do a resolution next month, then, or what?
We would do an amend, you know, adopt an amended, amended, uh, rules and amended resolution.
As of tonight.
New resolution, you know.
Make the motion.
Well, but it's not on the agenda.
Well, it basically is.
It is on the agenda, open meeting.
It's under FYI.
I thought when you were, what you were supposed to put on is the substance of the motion, something that.
Well, then you bring up the substance of the motion, make sure I get it by next month, then, okay?
Fine.
And whether or not it should be a resolution, or amended, or what, yeah.
Okay.
We're gonna continue to change my correct?
Right.
Okay, now, go to, um, here's a letter from Brian Brennan, in apology for omitting the township as a sponsor for the holiday stroll again this year. So, you know.
Is it, would we have been in?
What?
Where were we admitted as not being a sponsor earlier?
Pardon me?
It's on their flyers and everything, right?
Well, yeah, I mean, it's on that.
They're two years in a row.
Their flyers, and, you know, there was a green man.
Yeah.
Yeah, it's not the green man.
Also, this.
But not they are sponsored, and it's your nice.
It's kind of people's houses, and that's.
We sponsor the magic show.
Right.
Right, that's what.
Well, that's where it is, a number twelve on the form, which you have a copy.
Yeah, I have a copy of number twelve, so I'm saying, are the, um, how does that tell us that we're not a sponsor?
It just says, Dr. D's Magic Show performed, and we sponsor.
Yeah.
And then, right below that, it says face painting by Sponsored High School.
Right.
And the previous ones, it says, Spoleno sponsored this, or that, or the next thing.
We'll see next year, because they did this two years in a row, they did this two years.
Give him one more chance?
One more, three strikes.
One more, right.
Well, he's not playing it next year.
Pardon me? I already told you.
Yeah, that's what, and what I think.
They're walking on eggs.
I think that's a very.
Really, that's what I told him, I said, you know, egg.
Well, I think that's a good thing.
And I told him to relay this to who's taking your spot also, you know, that's what I did tell him, okay? Um, and Monday, the, uh, December twenty-first, at noon, we're having, um, you know, at the office, uh, here, room three, a potluck, so everybody brings something or something.
I'm losing my voice, right. Uh, is it, is it like dessert, or some kind of food, or something?
Uh, I've got dibs on buying either a pie and a cake, I've already called dibs on that, because it's easy.
Well, before you, John, I'm sorry.
I said it first.
Is Marge gonna coordinate what people are bringing, or?
I think we did last year.
No, we didn't.
We did.
No, and then I thought maybe we would do that.
Because I know, I know, and I brought something, I forgot what it was.
That, that's a lot of work for.
It gets complicated, yeah.
Everybody brings something, I mean, if nobody brings anything like.
Some cakes, or what?
Yeah, if everybody eats cake.
Oh, I'm gonna love you.
Who is the queen that says, let me eat cake?
Bob, Bob brought White Castle last year.
Those were so good.
Bob brought what?
Sliders.
White Castle sliders.
Yes, I know, sliders, yeah.
You want me to coordinate this? People can tell me what they're bringing.
Sure.
Okay.
I talked to Bob.
I'm bringing pie and a cake.
Talk to Bob first.
Pie.
Okay, okay.
That means it for me, I called it John too bad.
Okay, Ann, what are you bringing?
I don't know.
I don't, I didn't talk to my wife, I don't know.
I hadn't thought about it.
Yes, I am coming, I'm on that thing, so I don't know what I'm gonna bring.
I'll let you know on that.
Wayne, what are you bringing?
Again, I don't know either.
Okay.
Give me some suggestions.
Why don't you bring, um.
Prime rib.
You know, Jewel sells vegetable trays, small vegetable trays, and they have carrots and broccoli, and, uh, those green bean things.
Right.
And it, and it already has the dip in the center?
Yes.
So why don't you go and get a small one, we just need a small one.
Sure will.
So, we, uh, fresh veggies and dip.
Who's, is it just us?
Yeah.
Well, and the, and the staff, yeah.
Staff and smoke.
So, and then, so we have Margie, Andrew, and, uh, Bob.
And Lawrence.
Lawrence and Keith.
Oh, yeah, Keith.
I'll tell you what, I can bring, um, sloppy joes, people like sloppy joes?
Yeah, yep.
I'll bring up in a sloppy joes.
Okay, and then in the forum, we'll get Noel's bringing what, I mean, be in contact.
Email Mary Robb.
No, we need.
Drop a note in there.
Some appetizers, and then, what is this? And then drinks, right, like Coke.
Little Jack and Coke.
All right, I'll put, uh, put up a, uh, sign up sheet in the office.
I guess we're talking.
All right.
Okay, pass those around.
Good, well, thank you, you're on, Ann.
All right, um, what happened here? Wait, wait, did I give you just two sheets of paper?
Yes.
Oh, okay, there's one more, oh, there's, okay, okay, uh, first motion that the board approve and ratify payment of the bills identified on the general warrant, December 2015, in the amount of eight thousand, four hundred and sixty-four dollars, ten cents, as presented to the board this eighth day of December, 2015.
Second, roll call. Questions, concerns?
Yeah, I just have a comment, and I've made this comment before, and I know what you're gonna say, Rich, um, payment to the postmaster for the newsletter, I think that we should approve that before it's paid, and.
Well, we don't know what it's going to be, the postage is going to be.
Well, but that means we don't pay, we don't pay the bill until we get it.
Well, then, it won't go out until we get, you know, it won't be going out later, Anne.
But what's wrong with that? I mean, couldn't we just reschedule it for two weeks later? So that, you know.
Well, see, he comes in with the, um, uh, newsletter, and, you know, we pay that, and then he wants the, uh, the, um, postage too, because that's a separate line item for, or it comes out of, you know, he doesn't pay it, we do.
Right.
You know.
Right, well, we shouldn't be paying either of those before.
Well, we approve.
We get the bill.
We approve the newsletter, as far as I could tell.
Yeah, but I don't think that was a resolution like, here on, here and after, we will pay X for the newsletter, because it's not necessarily going to be the same price.
Then you write something up and we'll, we'll put it in next month's meeting.
You know what I would, maybe, maybe what to do is, is find out how much it is, does it vary?
Yeah.
Maybe take the high.
Well, that's the thing, that's why you can't really do something.
No, 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 you can put in a.
And he won't know until he reaches to the post office.
I understand, but take the highest one that we ever had to pay and say not to exceed, and if it goes over that, well, then it's going to have to go before the board again.
Well, that's one of those things, okay, we have that resolution in effect for utilities.
Okay.
And that is fine, because utilities, they're, we're going to get hit with interest and penalties if we don't pay them on time.
Correct.
So, way back when, we adopted a resolution for that. There's a difference between utilities and a newsletter. And so, I don't see, now, might want to run this by Kelly, you know, could you really do a resolution like that, giving a leeway between X and X, to pay for postage and newsletter? To me, it doesn't seem right, it seems like you should just get the bill, pay it, not pay it before it's, and have it approved before you pay it.
As long as we do what's correct, I mean, that was just a suggestion.
You know, it's going to vary, and then, he's going to give it to the post office, and that's when they tell him how much it's going to be. Now, we approve that, suppose if something changes in there? Then what, Anne? See, that's the problem also.
Well, well, at some point, when you take it there, you, you're going to, how does, how does the postage gets purchased? Is it, you don't part by stamps, I mean, it's bulk mail, so.
Right, if they change your bulk mail rates up or down, he will know till he drops it off, Anne.
That's true, that could change in the meantime, too. I don't know.
It's just my issue with it, as you know, is, is paying it before it's approved, at a meeting to be paid. And it's not like, you know, twenty-five dollars.
I'm sure he'll wait, but the post office won't.
Yeah.
So, I mean, you know, unless you want to go over and fight with the postmaster general in DC, Anne, go ahead.
Can we put this as part of the budget?
The postmaster here is going to help you.
And put so much money in there, and then what if?
Well, we have postage.
So, let it prove it, all right?
We have postage in there, yeah, you always have to approve.
I mean, even if the money's already there for.
It's, having it budgeted is nothing to do with authorizing payments.
Yeah, you're right, it's two separate issues.
Yeah.
How do you think we should do this, Anne?
Well, I'm not quite sure how, you know, what you're saying, how this all washes out.
It's as simple as I can make it, Anne.
So, we get the newsletter?
He, he, he prints a newsletter.
Okay, and he delivers it here, or we pick it up?
He delivers it.
Okay, and does he expect payment on spot?
Or he will wait sometime, you know.
Because that's the problem, I mean, for him, he needs to be able to wait, and, and, and understanding that it might be two weeks.
Yeah.
Or we need to, to schedule the newsletter going out in such a manner that we will have had this information, be able to approve it, and then pay.
You're forgetting totally about the post office's bulk mailing, Anne. And that's what you're complaining about. I'm not worried about the printer. You can't argue with, um, the mail, mailman.
So, how do you purchase this bulk mail, who does it?
He takes it and drops it off, and, and they say, this is how much it's going to be. It all depends on the weight, suppose if he uses different ink, or a little bit different paper, or something.
So, they, they tell him verbally, face to face, when he submits it?
Brings all these, his package of.
When he's physically here.
Thousands and hundreds.
Then what happens next?
Bulk mailers.
He, he learns that it's, uh, eight hundred dollars. What happens next?
He wants payment.
He wants payment.
Right now.
The post office wants payment now?
Right, yes.
They don't take credit.
Otherwise, you're not going to mail it. Now, if he comes back, suppose if they change it? He's not going to get stuck with it, Wayne. The difference, or he shouldn't. I think you're being a bit unreasonable here.
Who is he?
The printer.
The printer. Because with bulk, with, he must run a, because with bulk mail, you have to.
Oh, Andy doesn't take it over there.
No.
No.
You have to have it in zip code order, and then there's some other orders, you know, that you have to have it in. So, um, and that's why, because you are putting it in that order that the post office can use it easily, that's why you get the cheaper rates. So, the printer pays, the printer takes it over there and pays immediately whatever the cost is, and then bills us.
No.
No?
He gets.
Go ahead. The printer pays the post office immediately. When he submits, when he turns over the, the, uh.
Newsletter.
Newsletter, is that right?
No.
When does the post office get paid?
After they weigh it and tell them how much it is, they give him a receipt, and he has the receipt to us, and we have to pay it, otherwise, you know.
Well, there's a time lapse in there, then, isn't there?
What do you mean?
A day.
They give him the receipt, and he brings it here, and we write a check?
Yeah.
No, yeah.
So, the post office isn't getting the money right away.
But the check's made out to the US postmaster.
And then he drops it off at the post office. With, with, with the, um, newsletter. I mean, that's drop the newsletters off unless, they're not going to take the newsletter unless the, the post office isn't going to take newsletter unless they get paid, John.
But you said he gives the guy a receipt, and he brings the receipt here, and then that check is written, and then you go back to the post office.
That's another day.
You know.
Isn't it, or is it?
I don't know.
Well, I don't think we have a clear understanding of the procedure.
Well, I don't think we have to, I don't think we have to change the whole world as we've been doing it, you know, because the post office isn't going to lie to us, and we have a receipt.
But Anne has a valid.
Well, I know, but you still deal with the post office, Wayne.
But, uh, we can, uh, discuss this and come up with a solution, I'm sure. We're not alone in this.
Yeah, I wonder what other people do. Um, well, you know, maybe.
Okay, next month, I'll give you a step by step by step.
Maybe we can ask.
That'd be a good idea, a good procedure.
Well, they'd have.
And timeline.
Yeah, because I, I have a question or two on there, too, but I want to see what the procedure is.
Because maybe yours could be, the timing could be a little bit different on it, and it wouldn't.
Well, that's one thing, yeah. You know, between bringing it there, getting the receipt.
The newsletter comes out quarterly?
Yes, yes.
Seasonal, there's a.
Okay. Can we approve the warrant now? Oh, you made the motion, right, nine seconds.
Right, and we're just for comments.
Okay. So, now we need a motion.
We just need to take the vote.
Can you get that?
Roll call.
Trusty Clark?
Yes.
Trusty Ertler?
Yes.
Trusty Geisman?
Yes.
Trusty Kavinsky?
Yes.
Supervisor Tashir?
Yes.
Motion carried.
Okay. Uh, next, I motion that the board ratify and approve payment of the amounts indicated on the following warrants, utility warrant, December two thousand and fifteen, in the amount of one thousand two hundred fifty-three dollars, fifty-six cents. Payroll warrant, December two thousand and fifteen, in the amount of sixteen thousand five hundred twelve dollars, thirty-two cents. Health warrant, December two thousand and fifteen, in the amount of one thousand three hundred eighty-nine dollars, thirty-two cents. Monthly filings, December two thousand and fifteen, in the amount of six thousand four hundred fifty-three dollars, two cents. Grants, December two thousand and fifteen, in the amount of five thousand one hundred forty-three dollars, eighty-four cents. Petty cash, December two thousand and fifteen, in the amount of one hundred eighty dollars, twelve cents. General assistance warrant, December two thousand and fifteen, in the amount of six hundred dollars. Township radio players warrant, December two thousand and fifteen, in the amount of one hundred twenty dollars. All of the above, as presented to the board this eighth day of December, two thousand and fifteen.
Second motion. Questions concerns? Hearing the roll call.
Trusty Clark?
Yes.
Trusty Ertler? Trusty Geisman?
Yes.
Trusty Kavinsky?
Yes.
Supervisor Tashir?
Yes.
Motion carried.
Do I hear a motion to adjourn?
I made a motion.
Wait, before you do, can I make one comment further? Um, I just wondered, and Fran is here, um, Rich, if you had mentioned to her about your budget, Fran, um, you have less than you need in that travel line item. Oh, you did?
Oh, yeah.
So, you better mention that to Rich and get it on the agenda for next month.
I, I have the request. And I will do it.
Submit it, and we'll get it in next month.
Yeah, I'll get it to you, uh, this week.
Whatever.
And I wouldn't send it to Betty before it's approved. Um, one thing.
You know, do I hear a motion to adjourn?
Yeah.
All in favor?
Aye.